With the Open Public Meetings Act, this regular meeting of the Township Franklin Plan Board has been properly noticed. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have two members, one attorney, one new, for oath?
Yep, they've been sworn in already. You may just want to welcome them, Mike.
Welcome back to Godwell, and welcome to Ms. Brown.
Okay, Councilman Chase, Mr. Howke, Mr. Crazie, Diver, Mr. Mattler, Mr. Manzay, Mr. Brown, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Ragnow, Mr. Mola, Chairman Arseni.
Here. So we don't have minutes from the last meeting today?
No, 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 not yet.
All right, just falling down on the job. All right. All right, so vouchers. Didn't we already do the January retainer?
That's not. It's not. Maybe we want to pay him twice because he's so valuable.
No, I just, we had a January meeting.
December and December.
Oh, all right.
I think we did December's and January.
Fair enough. Okay, so move to approve the vouchers for Clark and Vignano, PC Planning Board Attorney, for both the January retainer in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, and the February retainer for the same amount.
Second the motion.
Mr. Howke?
Yes.
Mr. Crazie?
Yes.
Mr. Mattler?
Yes.
Mr. Manzay?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ragnow?
Yes.
Mr. Mola?
Yes.
Chairman Arseni? Yes. Just make sure you hear it. The mayor, I'm going to make a motion to open the meeting to the public, to the public for comments not related to the application we're hearing tonight.
Second the motion.
Calling favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone wishing to come forward to discuss any matter that's not on the agenda tonight?
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move the public portion to be closed.
Second the motion.
Calling favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a single hearing tonight, nine-two-eight Holdings LLC, PLN sixteen zero 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 eight.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Dr. Chase has appeared.
Hello, Dr. Chase. Good evening.
This is Chairman.
Yes.
I have a project with Van Cleef Engineering, so I would like to be excused just for the sake of conflict of interest.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you for your forthrightness. And you can probably take an early, early evening, because this is our only meeting. We don't have anything else that we need, and we have a quorum, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Okay, so floor is yours. Yeah, you're going to have to not only turn that on, hold it like you're a rock star.
Okay, all right. Is that okay?
Is it on? It should be. Yeah, it's on, okay. It should be, I'm going to turn it.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Hold it up to your mouth.
Yeah, you just got to hold it really close.
Like that?
Like American Idol.
Good.
Good evening, I'm Richard Kaplan, Rubin Kaplan Associates. I'm the attorney for the applicant, nine-twenty-eight Holdings LLC. This is for a property located at four-eighty Elizabeth Avenue, lots nineteen oh one and nineteen oh two. In addition, there is an adjoining lot thirty where there is easement rights, which is impacted by the application. The property's in the M-one zone. Warehousing and distribution is permitted use. This is an application for a warehouse distribution building. There's a site plan application with one bulk variance. That is a lot frontage, which is twenty feet existing, which is the existing conditions. It's a sort of a flag lot with a, with a lollipop stick in the front. That will be explained later. Three hundred feet is required, twenty feet is existing due to the existing lot dimensions. There is an existing site triangle easement along the frontage across lot thirty, and there's also an access easement, which is along the same lot thirty, which will be explained in detail later. By the way, those easements were submitted with the application. The site triangle easement was submitted as a standalone document. The access easement is pre-existing, and it was actually in the title report. If there's any questions, we can provide additional copies, but they are both in the application. And they do both exist, and the property owner has rights in both of those. There are two exhibits, I believe. One is the site plan, which is, oh, that sounds better. One is the site plan, which is already up and visible, and there's also an elevation, which is visible now. Would you like us to mark those?
Uh, are they, are they different from what's in our, are they colorized versions of what?
Just colorized versions of what the board already has.
Yeah, then you should mark them. Like A-one, A-two, something like that.
Well, it's one packet, right?
Right.
It's one packet, we can make it all A-one, and he'll submit the PDF to us. I think we already have the PDF.
Correct.
So A-one will be the site plan and the elevation.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, when you mentioned colorized versions, only the site plan seems to be colorized. I don't think the elevations are.
I just, the windows are bluish gray.
They're more gray?
Yeah, right. Correct.
Let's not worry about this. Just make it A-one.
Yeah, the elevation view is the exact same thing that was submitted. The site plan's the only one that's been colorized and enhanced, because we only give you black and white.
Okay.
I have four witnesses this evening. Two of the witnesses are, one the owner, one an employee of the applicant slash occupant. Two experts, one Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering, who will be testifying as engineer and planner and as an expert, and the other, Betsy Dolan from Dolan and Dean, who is the traffic expert. She'll be an expert on the traffic situation on the site. Would you like us to swear everyone in now, do it as they testify?
We can do it as they testify.
Okay. The first witness will be Mr. Luke Liang. He is the principal of the owner and the applicant. Yeah, he should come on.
Are you standing for me? Does the truth alter, truth or nothing? Say your names, microphone, spell your last name for the record and give your.
Yeah, my name is Luke Lang with Vision Industries Group.
Your current address?
Oh, Mike, you mean the office?
Yes.
Yeah, the current address is five hundred Matatchen Road, South Plainfield.
Spell your last name, sir.
L-I-A-N-G, Lang.
Mr. Liang, can you describe for the board your connection with the, both the applicant, which is nine-twenty-eight Holdings LLC, and the future occupant of the building?
This nine-twenty-eight Holdings, sorry, is going to be the owner.
You can, you can sit if you, if you want to.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, the nine-twenty-eight Holdings is going to be the owner of this new warehouse building, and then it's going to be occupied by the operating company called Vision Industries Group.
And what's your position with, what's your position with Vision Industries Group?
I'm the CEO.
And could you describe the current operation, where it is, and give a description of what's going to be planned here and what you're going to be using it for?
Okay. Vision Hardware, I mean DBA Vision Hardware, we are a supplier of window and door hardware. You know, I would say mostly window and then patio door hardware. So we are distributor. We supply to most of the window manufacturers in the country. So this is not the only.
Where are you currently located?
In five hundred Matatchen Road, South Plainfield.
And can you describe the business that will be conducted at the new facility?
It's a distribution center, so basically we ship, we're going to be shipping hardware in boxes to different factories, in, mostly in the north, northeast.
And can you give a description of the operation, number of employees, number of vehicles, cars, trucks, in a typical business day?
We have, we have about, I would say, twenty, twenty-one employees. We don't, we don't have our own trucks, you know, so the pickups are through UPS, FedEx, and some of them are LTLs.
Unless the board has questions for Mr. Lang, we also have Mr. Joe Blackwell, who's going to be the general manager of the facility, who's going to give a more detailed explanation of the use, the truck traffic, things like that.
What type of, of vehicles are the FedEx and UPS?
Well, the type of vehicles, I mean, they're box trucks, but we do have, not every day, but we do have the FedEx Truck Division, right, Joe? That's a truck division, but mostly just the box trucks to pick up, you know, loose boxes, a few boxes, because the packaging are pretty big for factories.
Excuse me, I have a question. On a typical day, how many runs of, do they normally make, all those lorries that comes to your site? On a typical day, can you give us probably an estimate?
I think typically we have about, I don't know, seven to ten, seven to ten trucks, some of them box trucks, and I mean, like, occasional, not every day we have fifty-four, fifty-four feet trailers.
And do you have the terminus, like, from nine to five or twenty-four hour base?
The, the UPS and FedEx trucks, they usually come in in the afternoon. I would say about three o'clock, Joe. And then, you know, for the customer pickups or LTL trucks, you know, they, it can be any time of the day, but mostly I would say in the late afternoons, I mean, late mornings till afternoons.
What I want to get at is probably you engage them at night. If you have already coming in at night, that could be a sort of nonsense to the people, because of the traffic around that area. That's why I want to, I want you to be precise about the time, probably the coming eight PM to twelve AM to offer that.
I think Joe can answer that much better.
I was going to say, the, the next witness is Joe Blackwell. He's the, going to be, he's going to be the general manager of the facility.
Okay.
I think specific questions are going to be better answered by Joe than, than Mr. Lang.
Okay.
So if, if you don't mind, that, that would be a good question for the next witness.
Yeah, that's cool.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Lang? No? All right, go ahead with your next question.
Thank you. Kind of close.
Got a little close, yes.
Raise your right hand for me, sir. Do you have the testimony going to me?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and give your.
Joseph Blackwell, B-L-A-C-K-W-E-L-L, in office five hundred Matatchen Road, South Plainfield, New Jersey.
And Mr. Blackwell, can you describe your connection with the applicant and the future occupant of Vision Industries?
I am the general manager in charge of day-to-day operations at Vision.
And have you heard the testimony of Mr. Liang so far?
Yeah.
And would you mind elaborating on some aspects of the business operation?
Sure.
With, with, you know, specific attention to the trucks and, and the flow of vehicles in and out, and the times of, and hours of operations?
Hours of operations are from eight-thirty to four-thirty in terms of the shipping operation, office eight to five. We have no deliveries after, deliveries or pickups after four-thirty PM.
Can you just describe in detail, number of vehicles? It may be a little bit of duplication, if you can describe the number of vehicles, the timing of when they come in and out, the employees.
Employee-wise, we're looking at twenty employees coming in by car. Most are there by eight-thirty. Everybody's gone by five. Trucks, as Mr. Liang said, we're looking at seven to ten pickups a day in terms of truck traffic. Generally speaking, they are your UPS small package carriers, US Mail, FedEx. We do ship some pallet quantities, LTL carriers.
Deliveries?
Deliveries come in via containers. Our products are shipped in from China, so we are receiving our products via container, twenty footers. Those are delivered in the morning, and any empties are returned at that time of pickup. So all pickups and deliveries are generally going to occur between nine and ten in the morning.
Any questions for Mr. Blackwell?
Fifty-four foot deliveries, is there a particular place that you can identify that they might be generally coming from?
Most of our, most of those are customer pickups when we do get them. They're accessing our current location via two-eighty-seven. They're either coming off the turnpike, two-eighty-seven, and most, if not all, are in the northeast.
Well, that's the, that's the part, I guess, of what I was probably getting at. I just hate to see a parade of them going in the other direction down Elizabeth Avenue, Amal Road, if, if you were able to disseminate or distribute directions to your facility to these customers. Maybe they could be directed from two-eighty-seven or from, from a more major artery. That was one of my concerns.
The, the vast majority of the people coming in with the larger trucks are coming in via the major arteries. They're coming off the turnpike, two-eighty-seven, and when they leave, they're heading back to two-eighty-seven to get on the turnpike to get to their destination.
Right, thanks.
That's the extent of what we intended for Mr. Blackwell to testify about. Of course, he, he, he may give clarifications later on if needed, and certainly answer any questions.
It remains sworn in as is Mr. Lang. Any other questions right now?
Yeah, in terms of expansion, are you guys planning the near future to expand that place? In terms of adding more workers or doing?
Really, what we're doing is consolidating. We have material in other warehouses. We want to bring everything under one roof. We've also want to be able to have more inventory. We had a situation recently, some of you guys may have read about it, where we had a major container company go bankrupt, and we ended up having some of our containers on that ship, which resulted in us having some shortfalls of material. So we'd like to have the ability to have more inventory, bring everything under one roof as opposed to being spread out. So we fully intend to use that for that purpose.
That's, that's the extent of Mr. Blackwell's testimony.
It's a planner?
Our next, our next witness is Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering, and he's going to testify about the site. Professional engineer and professional planner. He will be testifying as an expert. He will also be giving testimony about the one variance, and we certainly offer him as, as a witness. And.
Do you swear the testimony?
Yes, I do.
State your name, spell your last name for the record and give your.
Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, thirty-two Brower Lane with Van Cleef Engineering, licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I've appeared before this board numerous times.
Many, many times.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, assuming your qualifications haven't changed, you're accepted? Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll leave it to Mr. Ford to make his presentation. He's going to describe the site, testify about some of the technical aspects, and then, before he's finished, give some testimony about the variance.
Okay. Looking at exhibit eighty, or, I'm sorry, eighty-one. As was described already, the property's in the M-one zone. Its proposed use is in conformance with the zone. It fronts on Elizabeth Avenue, which is to the east of the site, and has access through a flagpole. That flagpole, or the pole portion of the flag lot is thirty, is twenty feet wide. That is the single one zone or one variance we have. It's a hardship. We don't have ability to acquire any lands on either side of us, and we've actually also have an access easement on the neighboring property to the south to accommodate the driveway. There's also a Buckeye Pipeline that traverses the site, and to the west of the site is the Heller Park Industrial Zone. So this is at the fringe of that industrial area that borders on Schoolhouse Road and intersects with Elizabeth Avenue. There's a substantial green portion on the rendering, on the southern portion of the site. That is actually one of the two lots. There's nineteen oh one and nineteen oh two. That area is encumbered by wetlands. There's no plans to develop that area, and that would restrict really any expansion of this facility. So what you see is what we envisioned to be the, the extent of the property development. It's a beige building highlighted in the back, the industrial warehouse building with a circular driveway around the entire property with a truck loading, not facing Elizabeth Avenue, although we're six hundred feet off Elizabeth Avenue, but not facing Elizabeth Avenue, but that wooded area to the south that I just described as encumbered by wetlands. We probably about the end of two thousand and fifteen started meeting with your staff to describe or discuss the concept and the layout and the development of this property. There were prior concept plans that had just a fire lane around the property, but we thought that for enhanced circulation as well as emergency access, we'd make that a fully functional driveway so that you could circulate both in a counterclockwise and clockwise fashion around the entire building. There was also a narrower driveway off Elizabeth Avenue from Elizabeth Avenue up into the site, but through discussions with your staff, including John House, that driveway's been widened to thirty feet. The site is serviced by public water, so there's public water on Elizabeth Avenue. As far as wastewater disposal, there's a proposed onsite septic system. As has been described already, while it's a large building, the occupancy is very low, and we've already done the soil testing for the septic system, prepared a design, which is part of your application package. It's in the site plan package, and we've actually already secured approval for the septic design from the Township Health Department, which actually sits in Somerville in the county building now, right? Okay.
So, so a couple of questions before you, you leave the site plan or, or go any further. The first thing that occurred to me when I looked at it is, can you explain to the board why your access has to be from Elizabeth and can't be from Heller Park? And can you also tell us why you want to, why you don't want to connect to sewer on the run or whatever?
Okay. The first question, and that was actually probably one of the most discussed items in meetings with the staff, and actually it was the desire of the applicant as well to gain access, not just from Elizabeth, but out to Heller Park Lane. And we made, both the applicant and our office, made several attempts to gain access through the property. We don't have frontage on Heller Park Lane, so there's another lot between us and Heller Park Lane, and that's a developed lot with an industrial building, actually owned by Heller. We made several attempts, and each time, after some deliberation and, you know, giving them exactly what we wanted or what we would do, the answer was no. I think part of the answer, and the negative response, was because the building's occupied by a tenant, and there was some concern about access through the property that's occupied by a tenant. What you'll see on our plans, though, is that there was, in addition to just the access for, you know, our vehicles, there was a major attempt to gain even a mutually beneficial emergency access. In other words, the, the industrial building to the west of us on Heller Park Lane has a long loop driveway, dead-end loop driveway around the back of the building, and Mr. House suggested that we provide for emergency access connection between the two properties. Again, the answer was no, but what we've shown on the site plan is how that emergency access could be affected and provided if and when those owners actually ever said yes. So that's the answer to the access issue. As far as sewer, our closest sewer is on Schoolhouse Road, a considerable distance away. The other alternative would be through the property to the west and out to Heller Park Lane, and again, that owner, property owner, wasn't willing to grant an easement. So we've complied with the wastewater disposal needs by doing the onsite septic.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have an issue with that, because, I mean, you only have your employees there, and it's not like you're generating a great deal of wastewater, right?
Correct.
The unfortunate thing, though, in my mind, is that you can't get access to Heller Park, because, I mean, that's what that is supposed to be, you know, an industrial drive with other industrial uses on that drive. That would be perfect, no one would care about your trucks or anything, you know, and on Elizabeth Avenue, it's kind of like what Bob Thomas just said, is sort of a, sort of a different story, as I'm sure you're well aware, so.
Right.
It would be good if, so if, if it's possible to gain emergency access at some point in time, should this owner have a, have a change of heart, or the owner change and the new owner be amenable to it, that you could not only get emergency access through there, but once again, attempt to get real access through there, maybe your emergency access could be through Elizabeth, and that way, you know, that's really the way it should work in, in a perfect world, I think.
Right, and, and, and I'll point out, the site layout lends itself well to that flexibility if and when that opportunity ever arises. In fact, in this case, even with, as regards to the emergency access, Mr. House even offered to host a meeting with all the parties involved, but again, there was not a, you know, receptive answer from the adjoining property owner. But there, there is a driveway in the back where we could easily connect and, and provide that access.
Well, it's at least good to know that, you know, the, the potential of doing so is, is still in the cards if that happens in the future and not set once you develop it this way.
Right. To, to your comment a minute ago, and Mr. Thomas's there's regarding the truck traffic, we've accommodated at the driveway, the truck fully accessible, left turn in, left turn out, right turn in. What we didn't want to do is provide for a provision to have the right turnout, because we really don't envision from the discussion with the use of the applicant and the, the destination of their users, a, a need to ever have a tractor-trailer make a right turnout of this site. And that's the way the site plans are shown.
Well, that's a good idea.
The county does not agree with that. The county has, the county has jurisdiction over Elizabeth Avenue. We had a meeting with them, we discussed our uses, we thought there was a receptiveness to it, but as recently as this afternoon, we received a review memorandum from the county that insists on that right turnout movement, which we will comply with, and it will really not have any substantive change to the site plan you're looking at, just the softening of the curb return radius at Amal, at Elizabeth Avenue. And again, this would be under the jurisdiction and review and approval of the county since they have jurisdiction over, over the county road. But, but we agree with you, unfortunately, the county. But, but we agree with you. Unfortunately, the county, in the review memo, in addition to asking for a twenty-six thousand dollar contribution to the improvements that have been made along Elizabeth Avenue over time, which you would think would, you know, accommodate truck traffic, will also comply with that, that request to, to the best of our ability to provide for that right turnout. Although we don't envision our trucks really needing that.
Is your, is your client willing to include in the testimony? I'm not calling for any formal commitment or anything, but re-enforce that it would be their intention to pursue that other alternative or make it happen should it ever become available?
We actually already showed that on the plan. We have actually a design for a driveway connection between the two sites. And there's a note on the plan that says we'll build it if and when the neighbors ever say yes.
Even if it's not a future date?
Yes. Yeah. That would be our desire too, because that takes us to Heller Park Lane and Schoolhouse Road into two eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mike?
The access driveway going to be?
All paved.
Is it possible to put pervious surface in such an environment?
For which the, the industrial?
Do you have any of the asphalt areas possible to put pervious?
Pervious, okay. We use that on a lot of applications now, especially for stormwater management practice. I think the answer in this situation is unfortunately no. Just because of the type of vehicles and the heavy weight of the trucks that we would have coming in and out of here, we wouldn't be permitted to use porous pavement. As far as water quality is concerned, though, there are manufactured treatment devices, so the stormwater management system has still been designed to provide that eighty percent total suspended solid reduction that's required and would be the same thing you'd get from porous pavement. Yeah, Carl?
Mike, you note that you went through the Heller Park, which is lot, Heller Industrial, which is lot ten point one one. Have you talked to the two southern properties, lot fifteen and fourteen, regarding access?
Let me.
There, there was some communications that, which is?
Here.
Those are the ones down here?
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to pull up my plan so I could look at it. It's, fourteen is Heller, also, so same owner of ten. Fifteen is a different owner, but we're precluded from that access because of this extensive wetland area here. So to get there, the driveway, we, we're already at our maximum wetland disturbance for a driveway for this driveway. So we wouldn't be able, we'd have to really go through, and this is where lot ten starts. Their detention basin's here. Their driveway access to Heller Park Lane is there. So fifteen and fourteen really were ruled out because of those two issues. Okay. As far as approvals, I mentioned we have the county review letter we'll address. We've received the soil erosion semi-control approval already. I mentioned the health department approval for the septic system. Other outside agencies are DEP for the driveway crossing up the flagpole. There actually is an existing general permit ten B that already was issued for that driveway. We have a pending application now at DEP to modify that permit for two reasons. One, to accommodate the tweaks that have been made in the driveway since we acquired the property and have had the design discussions that I've already referenced with your staff. And also to officially transfer, transfer the owner, issue person for that permit from the previous landowner to the current landowner, which is the applicant. We also have pending DEP permits for the little stormwater discharges and some buffer averaging of the wetlands. Maybe I can go through the staff reports now?
And how are you with the pipeline company for your crossing of the pipeline?
We haven't had discussions with Buckeye Pipeline yet, but we've already designed the project to have limited crossings of the pipeline. There's no, other than the water utility and utilities, there's no stormwater crossing of the pipeline, and the driveway would cross the pipeline.
Yeah.
And based on my experience with Buckeye Pipeline, having done the force main for the St. Thomas Church that had their force main go through the school property and cross the Buckeye Pipeline just to the west of this site, I don't envision any problems with them. It's, I think, somewhat different than Texas Eastern. These are not as large lines and there's not as extensive senses of an easement. And all the crossings that we're making are such that they're not gravity dependent, so we can go under or over the pipelines to comply with any clearance requirements that the pipeline company has.
Yeah, I really wish you could have porous pavement for the driveway since you are right on the edge of the wetlands there.
Again, it's, you know, unfortunately, I think actually, we had the same discussion on the St. Thomas Church driveway just to the, to the south of this property, you know, next to the school. They have a very long driveway leading to the church. And there's porous pavement in the entire site except for the driveway. And in that case, it was because of the, you know, vehicle traffic and the weight of the vehicles on that driveway itself, so.
You have a better argument for weight of vehicles than the?
Oh, sure.
Would.
Yeah.
I was just thinking that.
I was interested in whether there's any way of banking some of the parking since testimony has been that it'll be just twenty, twenty-one employees. And yet you've got fifty-four parking spaces, which is what the ordinance calls for. Looking at the layout, I can see that your trucks coming around to get into the loading docks. That would be difficult.
Right. Yeah, really, the, the, the truck loading and the driveways are the substantial, and the building itself is the substantial portion of the impervious coverage. The parking spaces are not a substantial portion of that.
That said, if you don't need fifty-four, then, you know, we're, we're open to hearing less. I mean, if you're gonna have twenty employees or twenty-one or whatever, and everyone comes in one car, you know, twenty-some cars, you have some buffer maybe?
Yeah.
Or thirty or something. I'm, I'm just.
A good suggestion, I'd say like in, as opposed to a lot of the religious institutions we've worked with, where there's bank parking, I'm not sure that it really applies or there'd be a great benefit here. Then I don't know, you know, that, you know, from the applicant's point of view, when they go to construction, you know, they're not gonna, you know, it'd be actually more problematic coming back and paving it later. You know, trying to fill in, re-establishing construction if they found a need for it.
I have a question. There are twenty to twenty-one employees at this site. Was any consideration given about pedestrian access to this site? I think it's a bit unfair to assume that all twenty-one will have a vehicle. So how would you accommodate a pedestrian that's dropped off on this site? Or would like to walk eight minutes to the nearby Dunkin' Donuts? Currently, there is no pedestrian sidewalk proposed on the access to the site.
Right. And there's, there's really not room for it in that driveway since we really chewed up all of our real estate by accommodating the fire official's requirement or request to make the driveway even wider than it normally would be. Right now, along Elizabeth Avenue, there is the bike lane, you're right, or shoulder, I'll say. There is no sidewalks to the north and south of the site. And we are, we're, you know, I'll say, a healthy person's distance walking to Dunkin' Donuts, but not necessarily, you know, a short stretch to Dunkin' Donuts. So right now, we're not proposing any, any pedestrian sidewalk. Right. And they could.
Bike lane?
Yeah, well, we, we are planning for the future. And now is the opportunity to actually have you show a sidewalk so that it will be in place should the adjacent property owners in the future redevelop their site. And maybe then we'll have a connecting sidewalk from there to Schoolhouse Road. But I also don't see onsite any accommodation of other modes of travel, for instance, bicycle parking onsite. There is fully accommodations for cars, but no considerations of other modes of travel.
Okay. I guess the applicant consider providing a little bike rack if somebody were to? And as far as the driveway, we have the thirty-foot wide driveway. It's not really, unfortunately, right now, it's not used by anybody else because we don't have a cooperative neighbor to share it with. But I think that would provide adequate room for somebody to walk up and down without adding more impervious pavement, you know, or sidewalk beyond it. You know, if you wanted us, we could provide, you know, even some onsite signage just to warn people of potential, you know, be careful, slow down, we have a long driveway back. Perhaps that's something we could work out with your staff to provide some clarification and a warning sign for, for people that might access the site. But it's, you know, is that okay?
Well, Mike, on the southerly side of the driveway, looking at the site plan, it looks like there's a good, I don't know, it looked like fifteen feet between the edge of the roadway and the edge of the access easement. Is that true or not? I mean, you'd say that there's not room, but it looks, when looking at the plans, it looks like there's about ten, fifteen feet.
Right at the driveway entrance to Elizabeth Avenue, the driveway mouth has been widened out. So we really don't, you know, in order to accommodate that truck turning, we're not, we're not gonna have room there to, and that's also a wetland area.
Looks like there's a good five feet still at the mouth.
You know, Mark, I'm not, I'm not, I gotta be honest. I'm not at all concerned about sidewalks in this area. I'm just not. I mean, it's, it's an industrial area. If it was residential, if it was, I mean, you've got very few employees in any of these warehouse uses, right? And, and they're mostly remote. I mean, it's a different thing in, say, you have sidewalks from, you know, the age-restricted communities over into Dunkin' Donuts or something like that. That we're all for, but I'm a little less. What I'd like to pursue a little more, though, is just, again, the parking. So you've testified that, you know, you're constrained by your use. You're not going to be able to expand. So there's, might not be a need to bank the parking. There may be just a need not to build it at all. I mean, just build what you need, and that will be it. Because it's not like this is going to all of a sudden expand to a hundred employees and you're gonna need more spaces, right? It, it's can't, it can't be expanded because you're geographically constrained. So, you know, I would like, I would like, I mean, if we got one, one side here trying to put more pervious coverage down, I'm trying to take it away. So, you know, let's just try to, is there any way you can, I mean, really, do you need fifty-four parking spaces?
Well, I guess really, the, the question would be, what, what would they, you want us to bank it? And what would be the mechanism for?
I don't want you to bank it. I just want you to build it if you don't need it. Don't bank it at all.
Okay.
If you don't need it, don't build it.
Right.
Don't bank it. It's fine. Don't ever build it. I'm sure people won't, I'm sure the environmental commission will love you.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest, can I, can I comment, please?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you mentioned the fact that that's likely to be expansion in the near future because business changes, right? It's not static. It's dynamic. You guys could decide to hire more people and?
No, no, they can't. They, they testified in the beginning that they are constrained by the wetlands. They cannot expand their site.
Okay.
If it's all warehouse, you need very few employees to actually service that. And, and that's what they testified. Now, you know, if they were to, if they were, if they were, you know, I wanted to come back and things changed in years down the road, you know, then that's, that's another thing.
So they are constrained that way, right?
Yeah.
To reinforce that, they're also constrained by the fact that it's a septic system.
Yeah, yeah.
That's gonna, I'm, I'm sure you're not gonna build it to service a hundred and fifty people.
No, then you'd have to hook up to.
You know, when you've only got twenty-some working. So there are constraints.
Mr. Blackwell wanted to add that if that's okay?
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell, and then Bob Mittler, you can go now.
Yeah, with respect to the, to the parking, a little closer. With respect to the parking, the twenty to twenty-one, we're talking the full time. You know, we do have the seasonality, so we will see an increase from time to time in headcount. And it's also conceivable that, you know, the business will grow and we may have to bring on more employees. Now that, as far as expanding the building, no. But, you know, the very real possibility that we could see some more people exists. We, you know, we don't know what the future may hold. Hopefully, you know, we do.
No, and, and, and that's, and if that's the case, and that's your testimony, then that's fine. I was just going by your earlier testimony. I mean, but again, consider if you, I mean, I don't know what your maximum headcount there could be. But I mean, if, if it turns out you only need forty spaces, then only build forty. That's what I'm saying. But if you really think you need fifty-four, then, you know, you know, then that's the ordinance. Then, then, you know, you can do that. But I'm just asking you to think if you really need that, you know?
Okay.
Bob?
Okay, I, the testimony has been that most of the trucks that are going to come are box trucks, but some are going to be larger. And the amount of pavement here, I, it strikes me that if you constrict that much more, it's gonna be very hard to maneuver larger trucks back to the loading docks. And so some of what is shown as parking may actually be, wind up being maneuvering space for larger vehicles.
Yeah, I think Carl or Mark, somebody there made, made that point, right?
Well, yeah, if I could just, I think to, to sum up the, this issue of parking, I think, first of all, for a building of this size, fifty-four spaces really is not a lot. The other thing to keep in mind is this, they're, they're building this for themselves now. Hopefully, they do wonderfully, and in ten years from now, they need a warehouse three times the size. They move somewhere else, and there's a new, there's another tenant, somewhere else in town, and there's another tenant in there.
Yes.
What I would suggest is maybe an appropriate condition would be that the applicant, that you're authorizing them to, to land bank, that they can meet with staff, come up with some number if they feel that land banking is appropriate. I think you do want to have more than twenty-one, because there's gonna be some overlap in, in terms of, of the shift change and then seasonal. So I think just, but I would recommend land banking as opposed to just getting rid of them. Because again, if ten years down the road they move, and another ten comes in, well, the spaces are there and approved, and they can be built.
Yeah, and that's, that's a great point, and that's fine with me. I just, I just didn't want them to build fifty-four spaces because that's the, what the ordinance requires if they didn't need it. Because the board's always been amenable to less impervious coverage and less parking if, if you didn't need it, so.
And Mr. Chairman, just so you know, not necessarily with respect to this application, but we make, we make that clear, loud and clear to applicants when they come in.
I know.
Build what you need, not necessarily what the ordinance requires.
Yep, yep, that's my message, yep.
The problem is that the parking is all sort of internal. It's not on the outer edge of the paved area, so that it's difficult to eliminate it or bank it. I mean, you, perhaps you could have a larger island where there's the parking sort of floating out in the middle on the southwest corner of the property.
Yeah, I mean, if you can, if you can work something out, that'd be great. If not, then, you know, it is, it is what it is.
Staff reports?
Yeah, and you know how we do these, right, Mike?
Yeah, we're gonna agree to them.
Exceptions.
Right, we're not gonna go through every item.
No, we are not. You're going to tell me if there's anything you can't comply with, and then we'll discuss.
We have maybe two or three items to talk about.
Mike, before you do the staff reports, one comment. There is a design standard for water mains or fire mains loops through properties. Requirement that it stays ten feet off either the building and structures. Bye.
Will comply with that. Great. We have four reports?
Something like that, but yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I have them all.
Well, let's see, we have, we have the planners, the township engineers, the, the environmental commission, and I think we have.
We have police and fire.
Yeah.
And we have something from Raymond.
Yeah.
He's, it's dated February sixth. I think the one we don't have, Mr. Orsini, is the environmental commission. We haven't seen that.
Yeah, I've got it in mind.
If there's anything in there that we need to address, let us know.
I've already discussed the one item.
Okay.
Okay, on that.
Okay. And, and then I'll say that the comments regarding the water connections in the two, six, seventeen memorandum are fine. Regarding the police review signs, according to the M L. police review, um, signs, according to the ML, uh, UL, you know, the, the signage according to the state regs, that's fine. And then there's a comment about, um, truck turning in the intersection with, um, the building. I've already described that the trucks can circulate around the building either in a clockwise or counterclockwise fashion. Um, now we're really down to just the planners' review. Uh, Mr. Healy's January ninth, uh, eighteenth, two thousand seventeen report. I don't think we have any objections to any of the comments in there. Um, we understand there's a tree mitigation contribution of some almost forty-two thousand dollars we would have to make. Um, I've already addressed the one variance we have, and, uh, I believe I've discussed in testimony the items that were, uh, requested to be addressed during the hearing, but if Mr. Healy, if I'm missing anything-
Two questions.
Anything, let me know.
Yeah, that's one. Um, well, first, I, I know you'd indicated, or the, the attorney indicated that the access, uh, oh, I'm sorry, the site distance, uh, sightline easement was in the packet. I, I didn't have a chance to review it. What does, is that an existing easement or, uh, or proposed and what does it allow you to do?
It's, it's an existing easement and it allows us to provide for, uh, clear line of sight at our driveway. And it's beyond what would be our required line of sight.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is that this is, um, looking to the right out, out the driveway, the roadway kind of curves, and they need to see a certain distance down the road. It's in front of somebody else's property.
Right here.
So we want to make sure that you have the right to clear in front of that and maintain that cleared area.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so.
Mike, Mike, please, please use the mic- microphone. Are we in here?
It was acquired from the same property owner that they acquired this site from. So as part of the transaction, we anticipated the site triangle requirement. So it was part of the package that they granted the easement, which is three hundred and some feet across the frontage of lot thirty.
We'll provide additional copies.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, because we do have the access easement. I don't think I saw the sightline easement, so review of that should be a condition of the board's approval. Um, and then there was a question about a sign. Is your, is your client going to want a sign? And the reason I ask is, you're so constrained with your curb cut, you know, it's, you know, the sign has to be placed in an appropriate place, you know, are you going to want a variance to be closer to the road and then it can't impede sight distance? So do you want a sign and where would it be?
I, we would want a sign, uh, in particular for, uh, emergency access with the street address number on it. And, uh, um, in your attachment five, signage restrictions for industrial wareha- or warehouse use, um, the maximum height is ten feet, maximum square footage is a hundred square feet, uh, and it has to be ten feet from a property line.
Okay.
So I believe that by placing the sign on that south side of the driveway where we might not have enough room for a sidewalk, but we probably have a little room, silverware room for a sign, that's where we anticipate putting it.
It's gonna be out of the sightline?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and ten feet beyond the right-of-way line. And at that point, we're actually within that access easement, so we also, I believe, comply with the ten-foot setback to our property line. So I think it's a complying sign and we'll provide details for that as part of any condition of approval to, to the, you know, staff satisfaction.
If you're saying it's gonna comply, then it, you know, it's really just a matter of a building permit. If you needed some variances, um-
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would ask as a condition of approval for a drawing that, you know, you can, you can have and evaluate so that what is built, you have a, something to compare it with and make sure what we've built is what's on-
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna put it on the site plan and demonstrate what you just discussed?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
One more question, the environmental commission, is lighting. Discuss lighting along your driveway and your-
Okay. We've, uh, provided lighting in accordance with the ordinance. We have a lighting plan. There was one comment in the staff review comments regarding lighting. You see, we have lighting along the driveway, uh, lighting, uh, circulating around the, the driveway around the building. Many of them are, are building mounted lights because their driveway is close to it. Um, we've provided the foot candle, um, intensity on the plan, so I don't think we have any excessive spillage or glare onto a neighboring property. Um, so-
All right, will these be LED lights?
I believe, yes, yes. Yeah, that's, that's really, I think, become the standard now.
Is there any lighting that's cut off? I mean, a- after hours of operations, that there's, there's more lighting when during the hours of operation than, you know, they go home at five o'clock or whatever, no more deliveries, and it's just security lighting, building mounted lighting, but not parking lighting, et cetera, et cetera?
Understood.
Something like that?
Yeah, uh, we didn't do it on the plan, but we can, as we've done many applications, identify specific fixtures that would be left on for security reasons. So they would be, you know, overnight lights-
Right, right.
But the rest of the lights could be turned out?
That would be good.
Okay. And there was one comment an hour ago, I'm sorry.
Ted, is this germane to this or we can't, can it wait till the rest or is it about?
Well, I, he seemed to be in the middle of a sentence there.
Okay, go ahead.
Regarding the lighting, there was one comment in the, uh, engineering report regarding, uh, for stormwater management, we have underground underneath the parking area, and there's one fixture, believe it of all the fixtures, there's one fixture that is actually within that, um, uh, area that has the underground basin. It's a three-foot or actually an eighteen-inch diameter foundation. Uh, they've asked us to move it. Um, we've already talked to suppliers. There's actually a supplier that supplies these underground basins, and that can be accommodated, uh, wi- within the basin without any adverse impacts. We'd rather leave that there and not have to, you know, it's really not an easy place to move the light to. So we can, we can provide to your engineer's satisfaction, uh, documentation from the supplier that the foundation can be accommodated within that underground basin without any adverse impact. If he has any issue with it or problem, we'll, we'll deal with it directly with him.
Okay.
Okay? Um, engineering review?
Ed.
Okay.
Uh, you, just since Mark brought up the clearing of the site triangle, if you're going to clear any trees there, has that been figured into the tree replacement calculations?
Yes, because the, uh, that's with an overall disturbed wooded area. Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a quick note on the sign. Um, Carl pointed out he's correct. Uh, the, the sign is going to be on the southerly side of the driveway?
Correct.
So that's actually gonna be on lot thirty?
Within our access easement.
Yeah, I, I think that technically that's a variance because they're putting their sign on, on another property. Proper sign has to be on your own property. So it's technically, it's technically all-site signage.
Even though they have an easement?
Even though they have an easement.
So we would request, we've advertised for the one variance?
I'm sure you've advertised for any and all.
Any and all, we'd ask for any of that.
That's what that notice is for, so that language is for.
Okay.
Good catch, Carl.
Thank you. Uh, engineering. Uh, we have a February third, two thousand seventeen review report, uh, from your assistant township engineer, Julio Vega. Uh, we don't have any objections or issues with any of the comments in the review report. Uh, there's one clarification we'd ask that the board weigh in on that consideration, and that is, uh, there's one item referring to, uh, section in your ordinance that requires that trash enclosures be enclosed within a masonry structure.
What, what, uh, Mike, what, what number?
What comment is that?
Yeah, what number is it?
Yeah, I don't think that applies. That's for, um, that's our commercial design standards. That's for retail and other developments, not for industrial.
Yeah, it's a number eleven on page four. So that, so that'll be okay to-
That doesn't apply.
We don't have to address that, okay. You just started my whole-
How are you handling trash, Mike?
Excuse me?
How are you handling the trash?
Uh, we show in the plan now a trash compactor in one of the loading dock, what would be one of the loading dock spaces.
Okay.
And if it's not a compactor attached to the building, it would be dumpsters in that same location. And they're in that area of the site that won't be visible from, uh, Elizabeth Avenue or even any of our neighbors.
If it does change the dumpsters, you gotta comply with John House's requirement of ten feet from the building.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we have plenty of room for that setback. Okay. Uh, in the engineer's report, there's a number of comments relating to Elizabeth Avenue's site distance. Of course, we, uh, just for the record, uh, want to make sure there's the understanding that the county has final jurisdiction over that. So although, you know, there may be some suggestions or comments here, if the county doesn't want us to do that or the county wants to do something different, we would have to address what the county's requirements are.
County's probably more demanding anyway.
Well, you know, actually, it was funny. I was, I was discussing with our attorney and, and what, you know, what we're gonna try, especially since we like your plan for no right turnout, um, I'm gonna ask him to, uh, you know, draft a letter to the county in memorializing what we want. And, uh, you know, it may not get us anywhere, but nothing ventured, nothing gained, so we'll give that a shot.
Okay, appreciate that.
Maybe I'll have to go to one of these planning breakfasts and actually, uh, throw my weight around a little bit.
I was honestly gonna ask if that were possible, to do that, to have the county do another review, because like, after twenty-five years, I get the impression sometimes that the person making the decision at the county level is doing it on paper and have no idea what they're doing in reality and how it affects. I would think the county would love it if we would take trucks off of their, their highway.
You would think.
And if they ever saw that direction of Elizabeth Avenue, they would also know that the right thing would be to limit the turnout because the trucks, those trucks don't belong on, on that part of the street.
And the only place they can go if they do that is another county road, Amwell Road, and that gets repaved every two years. So.
Uh, and it also has a bridge over the canal, which-
Is in bad shape.
In, in bad shape, yeah.
And, and it, even beyond that, if you wanted to head in a, uh, south or southeast direction from the site, you could easily make a left, go to New Brunswick Avenue, then over, you know, to head, you wouldn't have to ne- necessarily go straight from the site and beeline to Amwell Road. Um, I think I'm done with the reports. I just have one more comment or a request of the board before I turn it over to our next witness unless there's something else of me.
I know you've discussed it already, but-
Well, actually, now you might as well, you know, give us your impression of, of both the variances.
Right, right. Yeah, the, the site signage, uh, variance, uh, the fact that it's on a neighboring property, actually, half of our driveway is on a neighboring property. We anticipated that with the access easement. Uh, and the sign is, you know, not only, uh, important for our use identification, but for emergency purposes, uh, identification of the site. Um, so I think that the granting of the variance, albeit a technicality because it's on someone else's property, it's not something that we're putting miles down the road on somebody else's property. It's right adjacent to this site. Uh, the benefits far outweigh any detriment. And then, uh, for the, uh, lot width or frontage, twenty feet, it's an existing condition, uh, clearly, I think, a hardship C-one variance. Um, there's no other means of access and, believe me, as we've discussed, uh, we spent quite a bit of time and effort, you know, even with the assistance of your staff to try to gain other means of access to the site. Um, so we're utilizing the one driveway access that is available to us, and we've made provisions to provide for an adequate driveway to the satisfaction of your, uh, um, chief fire prevention officer, John House, with a wider driveway accommodating it with an access easement on our neighboring property. So there's really no detriment, um, because of that narrow flagpole. The adequate driveway access will be provided. Uh, it's a unique situation because it is a flag lot in an industrial zone that's not, uh, you know, I think typical or, um, something that you see in this entire, uh, zone. Um, and again, the detriment, uh, is far outweighed by the fact that it's a hardship that we cannot really cure. Um, the last item that I wanted to, um, put to the board is, as I stated earlier, we have the one driveway access, um, wetland permit, the, uh, GP ten B for the driveway portion that's within that flagpole. One of the conditions in that, uh, DEP permit is that you, uh, and this isn't entirely wooded site, that you don't touch a single tree, um, because of, uh, an endangered bat species. And you may have recalled hearing this before, in particular with the, uh, Cedar Hill Prep School project, that you don't touch a tree on the site from April first to September thirtieth. It's not a prohibition from removing the trees, it's just that they don't want you to disturb the trees, I think, during that, uh, particular species, um, reproductive season. Uh, what we would ask the board, should they act favorably on this application, that one of the conditions of the approval would be that, um, they allow the applicant at his own risk, uh, to do the clearing at least before that April first, uh, deadline, to comply with that DEP permit. We would provide any permits that the staff feels is necessary in order to do the tree removal. We provide soil erosion and sediment control measures, uh, a bond, uh, to restore the site. Uh, but we would rather not, uh, you know, for example, have a approval satisfy all the conditions in mid-April and then have to wait until October first to really do anything at the site. It's a, you know, a hardship on the applicant. Uh, and there really is no difference, uh, you know, we, we would still not proceed with any onsite physical improvements, driveways, storm drainage, any of that improvement, construction, until we have satisfied all the town staff comments and have signed sealed plans. The only thing that would be done would be the removal of the trees, probably down just to the stump, so there wouldn't even be grubbing, but, but that's what we'd ask. Um, and again, we did that in the Cedar Hill Prep Project, um, because of the timing situation.
Mike, do you have the, all the DEP permits in hand?
We have, um, yes, we have the driveway permit. No, we don't have for the stormwater outfalls yet.
I'm worried about that, the wetlands permits.
Well, that is a wetland permit, right.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it, but-
And, and, and where we're at with that is-
The trees.
For the trees. We're pushing them for that changeover of that GP ten B to our name, uh, with Mark House at the, at the DP. And I understand that as of today, actually, he was completing his review. So we fully expect that we would have all those permits in hand.
Okay.
Okay? And, um, what I report, um, factually is, in our discussions with the county about this access, we also relate to them, uh, this desire of the applicant to proceed with clearing in advance of securing all the, you know, construction approved plans, and the county staff didn't have an objection to that. And they would be willing to put it in writing. So we could secure that for your staff as well. I think I'm-
Further, um, questions for this witness? We have one more witness and we will, traffic expert.
Yes, Ms. Dolan.
Yes, I do. Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan and Dean Consulting, seven ninety-two Chimney Rock Road, Martinsville, New Jersey.
Ms. Dolan will be testifying, uh, as the traffic expert, and we offer her qualifications if the board so desires.
Very, very familiar.
My license is in good standing.
Excellent.
Thank you. Uh, we had prepared a brief traffic study, as you've heard from the prior witnesses. This is a low-volume traffic use. Our traffic study has been submitted to the county for the calculation of the impact fee, which, uh, Mr. Ford talked about earlier. Um, during the traditional morning and evening peak hours, we're looking at about fifteen driveway movements. So it is a low-volume use, um, and it is actually a lower, uh, intensity truck use, given the type of trucks that will be visiting this site when compared with, uh, traditional warehousing and distribution facilities. Uh, the driveway movements will operate at acceptable levels of service during the peak hours. You've heard from Mike Ford that the site driveway has been designed and is being designed to satisfy the county, uh, comments. And I liked the comment earlier about, um, the interaction with the board because I too believe that there's no reason for a truck to exit and turn right out of this driveway. There's, there's no reason for them to head south on Elizabeth Avenue. Um, that being said, the driveway has been designed to accommodate all movements. We've been tinkering with it at the county's request. The onsite circulation will accommodate two-way vehicular flow, including the larger, uh, tractor trailers that will occasionally visit this site. Uh, so from a traffic impact perspective, this is a, a light use, and certainly the driveway movements will operate at acceptable levels of service. And there will be minimal interruption to the through-moving traffic on Elizabeth Avenue, uh, because of the low volume. Uh, but I would concur with the other witnesses that if and when there's the opportunity to connect with the property to, uh, the rear of the- to connect with the property to the rear of the site, the Heller Park property, that would be a benefit not only to this property, but to the neighboring properties as well.
Let me ask a question. In terms of designing this driveway, so you're sort of designing it, obviously, to comply with the county. We're going to write a letter to the county saying we don't want trucks going right. Does it have any practical impact on the design of the driveway in the end?
From my perspective, the low volume of truck activity will allow a truck, if it really needs to turn right out onto Elizabeth Avenue, they'll swing into the inbound lane of the driveway. I mean, we do that for higher volume uses on state highway driveways all the time. It's a thirty-foot driveway, so there's an expectation that there's going to be some encroachment, because it's not continuous truck traffic. And here, with a straight driveway, certainly the inbound and outbound drivers are going to be able to see one another. The practical aspect of this, and the location, and the fact that two eighty-seven is to the north, has been lost in the dialogue with the county, despite Mike's and my efforts as well. But I believe that the driveway as designed can accommodate it. I think that with the tighter radius, it certainly helps to prohibit it. We were proposing regulatory signage, saying trucks no right turn exit, so we can design it either way, we've modeled it either way. Functionally, from a level of service perspective, it works either way.
Yeah, because, I mean, see, the way I'm thinking about it is, let's assume the county is the county, right, and they insist on doing it their way, so we design it to do their way. But you put a sign there saying, don't do that that way, and then everybody's happy. So I'm just wondering how hard I should, you know what I'm saying?
I do believe that it is worthwhile attempting, and I think this is a great case for trying to have the dialogue with the county. And I could tell you also that there's been a little bit of a staff change there. So the newer traffic engineer is, I mean, I've known her for a long time, but she's new to the county and new to these review issues, and I think a lot of the concern is the what-if for this particular property and another user down the road, and less so the practical need, or actually, there's not a practical need for that movement, other than perhaps in an emergency. So I would say it can't hurt to try the dialogue.
Well, that's what I figure, you know, and you're, obviously, your traffic analysis and your opinion to that effect is in the testimony, so that we can have now that as a backup, though I'm sure you already made that point to them anyway.
Right, yeah, we met with them a couple of weeks ago.
Just make it again.
Sure.
And, you know, use some standard arguments about, you know, Amwell Road and the bridge that Bob brought up, and, you know, all the reasons why it's probably not even practically necessary for a truck to turn right, and see whether or not they're just reading the traffic manual, or whether they can think at all.
We even put a restriction on ShopRite.
I remember.
Their trucks are not allowed to go anywhere other than Schoolhouse Davidson use two eighty-seven. I don't get it. But for the benefit of the county, would it be your testimony that all of that left-turn traffic that we want to put out on to Elizabeth Avenue, if we ban right turns, would you say it will have no effect on any of your traffic?
I would say that, and in fact, subsequent to meeting with the county, I provided a letter to the county to that effect, because they were suggesting that possibly the signalized intersection of Elizabeth and New Brunswick might need improved because of additional truck traffic from this project. And so we said, even if all of the trucks were to turn towards that intersection to go north, number one, it might be one or two trucks an hour, number two, most signal cycles, you're not going to have a truck, and number three, that intersection's been blown out to accommodate ShopRite and all of the other retail generators in that area. So there's certainly not a geometric need to modify that intersection.
At the time, there, from the testimony of the applicant, the timeframe where these trucks will be using that intersection of road, there's no traffic to begin with.
I agree with you.
I don't know what they're looking at.
Well, again, I would say that there's a little bit of a change of personnel there, and, you know, maybe a newness to some of the Franklin Township issues, but certainly, we've done what we can to address this issue with the county, and I would say again that if the township's looking to have a dialogue, it can't hurt.
Mr. Chairman, I think the concern of the county is if you don't accommodate for, appropriately accommodate for the right turn, and if somebody does, you know, the one out of ten or the one out of twenty that actually makes the right turn, well, in order to make that turn, you might have to go into the opposing lane of Elizabeth Avenue to make that right turn, if the radius isn't smooth enough. I think that's where the concern from them comes from.
That was my original point. I mean, I have no problem with the making the driveway as though it's going to be a right turn, and then nobody knows any better, but then put a sign there saying, no right, you know, no right turns. I mean, with seven to ten trucks a day, you could probably even work with the people who are picking it up.
Put a sign and put the.
Absolutely instruct them.
Left arrows, maybe even.
Yeah. But I mean, that's why I'm wondering how hard to fight, because of the fact that if we just sign it, and it's there, if they're concerned about posterity and what the site might actually become, it's still a full driveway, it's still a full movement, but the practical effect is we restrict it with signage. That said.
And then that plus the fact that.
That's the fallback position.
What percentage of the trucks are making the left?
Do it.
Well, we assumed that all of the trucks would be making a left exiting the site, because they'd want to go back to two eighty-seven. There's really nowhere to go, and it's not as though we're distributing goods to anybody immediately to the south. We're really, you know, highway-oriented. So our assumption was, and our subsequent letter to the county addressed, all trucks turning left out, heading north, what would that volume be? What would it mean in terms of possible intersection mitigation? And it was, it's an insignificant volume. And I don't know that Mike said it during his testimony, I don't think so, but there were also iterations where we looked at widening Elizabeth Avenue, and that was rejected by the county. So, and recognizing the wetlands constraints and the easement and the flag lot, you know, we've done our best, Mike's, I think, very close to satisfying them with one more design iteration that went out today.
Yeah. Thank you. Questions?
Make your idea, just put a sign up.
I think, like the chairman said, putting a sign remained the obvious option here.
Well, I think that is on the plan that's been submitted and reviewed, because that was our intention all along, so the sign may still be on Mike's plan. It is, he says.
All right. Yeah. Okay.
Got it.
Any other questions for either Ms. Dolan or anybody else before we go? For which we had to believe. I'll make a motion to open to the public.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public that's not part of this application?
Seeing no one come forward, moving to closing the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any additional board discussion?
For the record, I think this might be the first application where the condition would be only left turns.
Yes.
It's always the opposite.
I think because of the constraint from the county, I believe.
Little planning board humor for everybody.
Pushing to a application for the variances, one, signage, the other one, all the other considerations that we've mentioned.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Houck?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mansory?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, and welcome to Franklin.
Ms. Ragnow?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anything else tonight, Mark?
That is it.
When's our next meeting?
Uh.
Roughly speaking?
I do not know. We'll send you an email. I don't know.
Okay.
Christine and Vince handle those aspects.
When is the revised ERI going to be submitted to the planning board?
What my plan is, is the ERI, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, the ERI, the farmland plan, and the historic element have all been done. What I want to do is, we sent the farmland plan to SADC, which is the state program. We want to get their input first, make sure it's okay, before I present to the planning board. I kind of want to do all three at the same time, so that's why it's, you know, being held up a little bit.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
All in favor?